We respectfully acknowledge that the Kumeya Nation are the original inhabitants of the unceded land now known as San Diego.
Okay, this is very disturbing that this is something that we even have to talk about. We shouldn't be having police officers engage in underage relationships with students at a high school when they're set there to work. And, you know, I think we really need to be mindful of who we are, you know, putting into the schools to be around children when pedophilia is something that is very prevalent in the United States of America unfortunately, and we're some of the biggest consumers of child porn. So, you know, we need to be making sure that schools are not a place where this kind of behavior is going to take place. And, you know, this officer should, hopefully he's been fired and is no longer even a part of the police department because it makes the police department look good. You're only as good as your worst employee. So hopefully this will get justice for this individual.
Thank you. Please proceed to see S2.
And this one, this one is a little bit disturbing as well. They all are. I mean, it's, you know, there's constant cases from trips and falls. And this one, I mean, somebody has neurological injuries in addition to orthopedic, but, you know, I think is, we just have to be constantly doing better, making sure that we're not putting people in danger through the infrastructure, not being kept up or what have you. And, you know, the money that continues to be spent for cases like this, when you have to pay someone a settlement, just takes from more money that could be going towards something else. So hopefully these start to, you know, die down and not be so prevalent here at the city council because it seems to be there's one pretty much every time you guys have to go into closed session. So I'm hoping that this person can, you know, find some kind of relief from whatever you're going to be providing to them.
So Marcela Escobar, President, CEO of Atlantis Group Land Use Consultants, representing the applicant. We are prepared to go forward today. We're a little surprised about this continuance. We feel that we've been at this for five years. This is why housing is expensive. This continuance will cost somewhere between $50,000 and $100,000. Again, we've been at this for five years. We still have to go to state coastal commission and we have worked very, very diligently with the community. There's a number of hundreds of supporters that have written letters of Council President Lekavas constituents. Many of them are here today and took their time to be here, but if that's the will of the council, we will take the continuance, but it is very disappointing. Thank you.
I see nobody else lined up to speak. Did you want to speak on the continuance? Please state your name for the record.
Good afternoon. My name is Sanjana Supaker and I'm an attorney at Carson's Black &amp; Minter. And I'm representing the San Diego River Community Alliance. And I too would like to express our concern regarding the continuance. Many of our members took time off work to come here. You know, we're ready and prepared to express our objections to the project. And, you know, we were, you know, looking forward to communicating those to the council today. But, you know, we understand. So if they cancel, if the council needs to continue, the matter will be ready and prepared as well. But we do sincerely would like to just express our disappointment. This is an issue that our community members have been really focused and really concerned about, particularly in light of the fires, devastating fires in Los Angeles. This is on the forefront of everyone's minds. So thank you very much and appreciate your time.
My name is Harry Krikorian. I'm representing maybe 50 or more Carmel Valley residents with me today. We've strongly supported this project. We're very disappointed that it's not, that it's being discontinued. Or I should say continued, not discontinued. Many of us have come to support it today as we have for the last several years. I'm really surprised that Planning Commission could approve such a beautiful project with an overwhelming 11-0 vote, and yet we come here today and apparently there are some issues unresolved. It's a magnificent project, well needed in the community, and we've expressed our support for the last four or five years. If we need to come back, we will. I understand that there's a, it's disappointing to drive all this away, have so many people here and not be able to make our position clear, but we appreciate the opportunity to come back and do so. Thank you.
And I just wanted to speak on behalf of the community that the delays that take place in this administration are so unacceptable and they're hurting us tremendously. There's a lot of focus on importing Afghani refugees, right? We can bring them in because we can't house our people that live here, but we want to bring in Afghani refugees, right? Because that's what Mayor Todd Gloria and several of you have thanked Afghan evac for bringing undocumented Afghani refugees to San Diego and building a large community when we're trying to house our current residents. I experienced a terrible horrific violent crime here in San Diego and it's been delay, 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 delay for four years. So we can't house our community, we can't protect our community, we can't afford our community, and yet Todd Gloria is going to the Philippines and spending $8,000. $24 billion is missing and our auditor doesn't know why or what $142 million in other pay is. Other pay isn't overtime, it's not pensions, it's not benefits. Something really terrible is going on here and it's unfortunate that people have to leave their jobs to come here to present to you and you're not here to hear them. Or Todd's not, right? So something needs to be done here in the city. It's really unfortunate. I think a lot of job loss, a lot of confusion, frustration, distraction takes place for people who are just simply trying to carry out the work of housing people in San Diego. Thank you.
So I wanted to point out a couple of things. As the other members of the community are very disappointed that we cannot have the discussion today, but even though I would still like to give some points, I just read an article which was published by the San Diego Tribune on February 4th talking about how the Carmel Valley Community Planning Commission is concerned about those four armed conditions which they believe has not been met by the developers. Firstly, I just wanted to point out that last time when we had this meeting here with the Planning Commission, there were statements made like, "We don't want that development to happen because that's going to obstruct our view." When people bought, when residents in fact bought the properties 10 years back, besides an empty lot, were they thinking that there's going to be no development happening in 10 years? Of course not. So if they're having development right now, I believe a lot of the incentives for residents to oppose this project is solely based on them not wanting to have any further development in the area. Second point which was mentioned in the article which I read was that there's a big concern about traffic because there's only one entrance way to the assisted living facility which is through the church. Mind you that I volunteer at the Sunday School and I know for the fact that this church is only operational during Sundays and that too in the afternoons and occasionally on Wednesdays in the evenings for the home and dance classes. So at the other time, there's going to be no traffic from the church community. So I believe-
Your time has concluded, sir.
Yes, I first wanted to say amen to what the woman in the overall said. She's very spot on. And it's very disheartening and, you know, you should be more transparent as far as why you're wanting to continue it instead of just, you know, stating that you want to continue it when all of these people have taken time out of their day to come down and redress you guys to let you know how they feel about this item. You are disenfranchising many of these people because who knows if they're going to be able to come back when you, for, when you actually hear this item. And if what the applicant said is true, as far as it could potentially cost $50,000 to $100,000, I don't know why that would be, but if that's the case, that's a huge problem because you are, you know, putting, you know, more problems onto the people that are trying to bring this forward and provide something for the community. And I just, you know, again, I think you guys need to be, if after everybody speaks, if you could be more clear for accountability and transparency to say exactly why you're choosing to do this. If it's the city's negligence, that's a problem because if the applicants can be ready and if all these people can be ready to come in and let you guys know how they feel about it or what's going on with it, the city should be able to do their job and make sure that they're ready to hear an item. So if there's something going on that, you know, is causing it so that you guys aren't ready, you need to be transparent with the people so that they fully understand why you're doing this and it doesn't seem like there could be some funny business going on because that's usually what happens with the city. And, you know, I just think you need to be more respectful of the people that do take that time out of their day to be able to come and, you know, talk about certain items because again, there's going to most likely be a lot of people that are here today that won't be able to come back next time. And in that, you should actually let them say their piece so they have-
Your time has concluded.
So regarding the continuance, as previous speakers have said, it's hard to know just the rationale for this. What is it going to be considered? There's one thing that the potential residents of this facility don't have, and that's frankly much time. If you look at the review of who's going to be potentially living here, it's people with an average age over 80 years, people who require assistance with basic activities of daily life, and many of them will require memory care and be treated for dementia. So every day that is delayed providing housing for this people impacts not only these older adults who need this housing, but delays and continuances impact family members who may at this point be providing care in their homes or in other facilities. So it's, as someone who has been a caregiver, who assists many other friends that are participating in caregiving for older adults in their lives, family members and friends in their 80s and 90s, delays are a luxury for people that are not dealing with the daily care of senior residents who require assistance with their daily living. So please, I encourage this council to keep this in mind, not only for this project, but for future projects that come to you that require, that are aimed at these types of facilities. The daily costs, the daily resources needed add up very quickly. And so I understand the frustration expressed by the applicants. Delaying these projects puts a tremendous burden on many families who desperately need this type of supportive and assisted living for older adults that they are caring for. So I hope that you will bring this back as, just as soon as possible. Thank you.
Joyce Senyata, District 3. First of all, I'm on the fence on this. I'm not going to give you a yes or no, but I do want to speak on the continuation process. First of all, as other speakers have said, we need transparency on these continuation items. We need you to give us a basic synopsis as to why you're doing that. Hey, there are 26 backup items on this and I don't know if those four issues are somewhere given to us in those 26 items, but we have a right to know that. And dear public, please know this. You are beautiful and you gave your voice today. You didn't miss out on anything really. You took me on the ground and I got to see a better picture of what happens in our government and on this item. So honor these continuants, not a yes or no, I'm not saying that, but do speak your voice. If you're in the audience and they continue it, you have two minutes to stand up there and speak your voice or be on the phone. Don't give up the beautiful time you have to do that. I'm realizing now how, thank you, City Council, for giving us that public speaking time. So I wanted to say one more thing and I think I'm forgetting it, but anyway, it works in many ways, but do give us a synopsis and give us transparency, would you please? Thank you. Love to all.
I appreciate everybody that did take the time to come down the decision. My decision to request a continuance was made middle of this morning. We did try to reach out to individuals, but it's always a little bit tricky having been in this position in my prior days in the private sector. I don't take this very lightly. My colleagues and city staff know that when these issues come up, I take a very deep dive. There's been five years, as was mentioned several times. There's been literally thousands of hours put in by the applicant and their team. There has been questions raised by the neighborhood and by the planning group, and I take that all very, very seriously. And I want to make sure that whatever action we take, that we do that thoughtfully and correctly and being fully informed on the issues. I know I spent the entire weekend reviewing the material that led me to this decision to request that continuance. I do, again, I don't take that lightly. This is a District 1 project, so I'm maybe a little more familiar with some of the issues in that corner of our city. But with that, I would hope my colleagues would support the request. It's a motion by myself and a second by Councilmember Hila Rivera to continue the item to, continue item 203 to Monday, March 17, 2025 at 2:00 PM. And I see Councilmember Campbell's on the lights.
I don't see any reason for a continuance. I think we need this facility. It's a beautiful facility. It's been approved and I think we should go ahead and vote on it today. Thank you.
And that does pass eight to one with Councilmember Campbell voting no.
Today, my office is requesting your approval of a process to authorize the office of the city attorney to participate in amicus briefs, initiate and join litigation, and participate in federal rulemaking on behalf of the city of San Diego. Next slide, please. The city has historically joined amicus curia briefs and other actions when approved by council in closed session. An amicus curia, friend of the court brief, is appropriate where the ramifications of decisions extend beyond the current parties. Joining gives the city the opportunity to provide facts for a court to consider when deciding on these important matters. The city's participation as an amicus in litigation has been valuable, often cementing victories in the appellate courts that affect city residents. Next slide, please. Between 2018 and 2021, the city joined several cases related to federal immigration policies that are identified in the staff report. Since mid-January, my office has received several requests to join lawsuits and amicus briefs arising out of actions taken by the new federal administration, including threats to freeze federal funding to cities and to the constitutional and statutory rights of city residents. On all of these prospective cases, the city's time to respond has been extremely short. We anticipate many more requests will come and are asking council to adopt this process to consider joining litigation and filing amicus briefs to preserve the city's rights.
At last, I heard our idol attorney, Ferber. We voted for you. My only comment strictly, simply, the temporary stopping of money is an opportunity. Our focus should be to survive with whatever we have. I am speaking like a father and a mother. We have this much. I think that's the opportunity there. Why are we spending money and resources just to do some process to sue them? What will we get? Probably we can just telegram, excuse me, let's continue the grant and money, period, and then focus on some solution on how to survive with what we have. That's fatherly advice. We did that. Why? We have real estate by gully, we have Torrey Pines, the golf course, the public course, we have the Balboa Park where they're milking cows, we have the water authority, which we have given them so much money and now we are being held up blackmail. Hey, counselors, approve this because they need money because the other byproduct which is dirt and slugs will be in jeopardy. Please, let's dig deeper, find out and do something. We have now a crisis, how to sustain the survivability of those sick and dying victims of Tijuana River pollution, the victims of other issues like fire-
Thank you. Your time has concluded.
Hi, good afternoon. Mary Davis here, government watchdog and citizen journalist. And I'm here, you know, opposition to this for a few reasons. One is transparency. This makes, it's, you're going backwards in the transparency game when this comes to this. And so I'm asking you to reconsider because I keep hearing that that's an aspiration for many of you, but your actions frequently do not match your words. Also is accountability. Switching to a passive opt-in system denies accountability to the public. As we just saw in item 203 for the continuance, you had a public vote and you are on record for owning that vote. If you go to this system, not only does the public not know what is coming before you and what you're being asked to participate, you're not on record because everybody has plausible deniability. I never saw the email, not that I've ever used that excuse, but I would also be remiss in pointing, in not pointing out that your quest to protect bodily autonomy via the reproductive rights is laughable and very subjective. As your accountability partner, I'm here to remind you about the grave harms that you imposed in 2021 through 2022 or 2023 via your vaccine mandate on employees. Where was your concern for bodily autonomy then? While it is a subject I'm sure you like memory hold, there are those of us who do remember and I want it on record. Lastly is opportunity cost. The city is on a fiscal cliff. You cannot afford to be going for wants over needs. Filing amicus briefs is a want, not a need. If you feel that strongly, then litigate the measure yourself. Hopping on the litigation bandwagon versus amicus brief is a low priority. If your attorneys have that kind of time on their hand, please put them to one of the more essential duties like slapping on a headset for 911 or going out and fighting a fire. This is political posturing. Thank you.
So I admire the concept and the goals of this at a time when we are under unprecedented attack from unelected people operating in Washington. But the Brown Act is very clear that you need to report on this in open session. When it comes to amicus briefs, the Brown Act states, "With respect to litigation, approval given to the body's legal counsel to defend, seek, or refrain from seeking appellate review," you need to let the public know. And go, you can do a direct docket as you did with this. You can get that in front of the council very quickly, but you need to identify who the parties are, the substance of the litigation, if you decide to, and why you decided to initiate litigation. And once the litigation or intervention has been formally commenced, you must upon inquiry disclose that information to the public unless you do so would jeopardize service or process and so on. In other words, the Brown Act makes no provision for what you were proposing today. And as a city council, I have reminded you many times, you have lost on other Brown Act appeals and violations. You have settled when the public has had to point out that you are in violation of process under the Brown Act. So I have complete respect for the goals and the aspirations to counter what one day may turn out to be criminal activity at the federal level, but I don't think that the local government should in turn violate state law in its efforts to counter violations of the law at the federal level. Now, there are several of you on the council who are attorneys. Some of you are licensed, some of you are not active. So take a look at the Brown Act, what it says about amicus briefs and what it says about reporting in open session to the public about this type of litigation. And please comply with the Brown Act on this proposal. Thank you.
Dang, looks like it's coming to bite you guys in the butt. I've been telling you for over a year that what you guys have been doing by aiding and abetting and harboring illegal aliens was going to bite you in the butt and look at what's happening and you're acting like the federal government is acting criminally. You guys have been. That is the consequence of going against the rule of law. The oath that you took, it's treason, what you guys have been engaging in. And now you're going to want to spend the people's money to fight the federal government for upholding the law that you guys refuse to do? And then you wonder why funding is going to be cut? Are you that ignorant? Are all of you that ignorant and stupid? Or are you just so arrogant that you think that you're going to win against the federal government when you guys have been engaged in these crimes? You don't think that you're going to have a jail cell waiting for you to continue down this path? It is absolutely ridiculous that you guys think that spending the people's money to fight the federal government for upholding the law when you have been breaking it just so you can get more funding? To do what with? What do you guys do with the funding that you get anyway? It goes into the pockets of people that don't deserve it, that are banking off the backs of people's suffering. It is atrocious to think that you guys are that dumb, to think that you can do this and pull wool over the people's eyes like, oh my gosh, I can't believe, and then claiming what the federal government is doing is illegal? Oh my gosh. It is ridiculous because you guys take the rights of people left and right every freaking day that you are sitting up on that dais. And yet you want to go like, we're doing this to protect the rights of the people. Bullshit. I call bullshit, it smells like shit, and you guys are all going to be culpable and liable for the little girl that was raped because you did nothing about it, you incentivized it to happen, and you are culpable and you deserve to be in jail.
Your time has concluded. Next-
Thank you, City Clerk Fuentes. Joyce Senyata, District 3. These are amazing times. It's, it's an amazing time to be alive for me. I love grants. From the staff report, feds failed to consider the reliance interest of the many grant recipients. So here's a question for you. Do we have a protection policy on the books now? Since this is called a process, are we honoring a policy? I'd love to know that and what that policy is. This is where we need a law guru. Thank you, City Attorney Heather Ferber. Congratulations on your winning. And thank the rest of your team. We need you. It could be a law war. I don't know. All of California is on your side and key partners are on board with your team. Another question for you. Is this quick enough to enable the city to respond in a timely way? It still doesn't seem quick enough to me. This is a very tenuous time for all of us. We need you to include us in the circle. Love to all.
Good afternoon. My name is Danny Avitia, resident of District 3. And I want to start off by saying and thanking the city attorney's office for their work on this matter. I have full confidence in the city attorney's ability to navigate this process with the due diligence and experience it requires. That said, this is an opportunity to ensure that San Diego has a voice in the judicial process and at this time when it matters the most. Given that the political climate and the direction of the Supreme Court, we know that there will be decisions that do not reflect the, our city's values. I also want to recognize the concerns raised about transparency in this process raised by others today. And while legal matters are often discussed in closed session, it's critical that our public knows that they do have a stake in this. Our residents deserve to be informed, engaged, and assured that their city is fighting for them on issues when it comes to the Supreme Court and when it comes to the judicial process. So, well, I want to make sure that there are, the concerns raised by community members are addressed within this. I am very supportive of this initiative and this is about ensuring that San Diego is not just reacting to judicial decisions, but actively shaping the legal landscape in defense of our values as a city. We must take this step to protect our community, our rights, and our ability to govern in this, in the best interest of the people that we serve in the city. Thank you.
Streamlining the city's ability to file amicus briefs, join lawsuits, and engage in federal rulemaking challenges ensures San Diego can swiftly respond to policies impacting our residents and finances. While I do support this proposal and the need to expedite, to expedite process due to short timelines, I do urge expanding its scope to include civil rights, anti-discrimination protections, and diversity programming for protected classes to ensure a more inclusive approach. We've seen time and time again how federal actions disproportionately- We've seen time and time again how federal actions disproportionately affect black communities and civil rights. The Attacks on the Civil and Voting Rights Act, the gutting of diversity programs, and efforts to roll back anti-discrimination protections are not just history. They are happening today in real time. Under federal direction, we saw the Justice Department Civil Rights Division freeze its enforcement efforts, walking away from cases designed to protect vulnerable communities. An executive order eliminated DEI programs in the federal workforce, making it harder to address systemic inequities. And another order revoked equal employment opportunity rules, rules undoing decades of protections in federal employment. We must be prepared to respond when these rights come under attack and impact San Diegans, whether it's voting access, discrimination protections, or diversity programs. Strengthening this authority will better serve our residents. Thus, I move staff's recommendation with the addition of the issue area of, one, civil rights, two, anti-discrimination protections, and three, diversity programming for protected classes. And thank you, Council President, and that concludes my comments.
Kind of a sad state of affairs that we need to have this in front of us because the speed and volume of illegal activity that the federal administration is engaging in right now. But we're here and I do think this is a good way to make sure that there is some process without hamstringing your ability to respond as the city and as the residents of the city will depend on you to do. So I also, while being fully supportive of this and seeing the value of legal action, I think it's important for all of us to recognize that our rights, our constitutional rights, only matter to the extent to which the law is respected and enforced. And we are dealing with an administration that has already shown not just a willingness, but an eagerness to act lawless. And so I want to make sure that none of us are under any illusions that the courts will save us or our communities. I think, I'm reflecting a lot on this and I think that we as a council need to, in partnership with the mayor, ensure that we are all taking the actions necessary to protect our community and to continue to move our communities forward in the ways that they need and deserve us to move them forward. This is going to be a community-wide project. And again, I just can't stress this enough. We're not going to be saved by the courts. We're not going to be saved by Congress. We're going to need to act stronger as a community. And that's going to need to also mean, I think, being a little bit more explicit as a city about where we stand on some of these issues because our communities are looking to us. And now is not the time to be silent. So with that, thank you again, Councilmember Foster. I think your inclusions are extremely important. I'm appreciative of the item being brought forward and will be happy to support it. Thank you, Council President.
And that passes unanimously, nine to zero.
All right. Thank you for that very good work.
Hi, yes, Mary Davis here. And so I'm just asking you, please, actually, no, I'm imploring you. Please focus and get your financial house in order and focus on getting your priorities straight. That means absolutely taking care of needs before wants. Many of you may know, some of you don't, that I am a retired 911 dispatcher, a police supervisor from the city. And so that's my vested interest in this and I continue to advocate for them. And you continue every year to be paying out a lot in litigation for trip and falls. But I also hearken you back to 2015 and 2016 and the 911 crisis when the child died, they couldn't get through on 911 because of the pit bull attack or somebody sat in their home for seven minutes because they couldn't get through on 911. As I look through the reports, and I hope you do pay attention to those, they look good on the surface. They're at 98% the last couple of months, 89. That's what you're striving for and that's kind of like meets expectations. The number that really jumped out at me is those that are on hold for 120 seconds or more. That's two minutes. If you have six minutes of brain oxygen and they spend two minutes on hold, that's setting the city up for liability and a dispatcher up for trauma. Also, one of the reports shows 203 calls waited a minute or more. Again, completely unacceptable. So I'm asking you to bring in more dispatchers, pay them more, get that up. And that's why the amicus brief thing, I mean, I see people doing discretionary things while your critical infrastructure and your critical essential employees are going underpaid and understaffed. The solution in 2015 was, for some reason, to bring men in as officers to do more, I mean, to do less and get paid more while the female classification suffered and had our rates trickled out over a year and a half. That was unacceptable. So please focus on priorities.
Thank you. I would like to go back to the 142 million in other pay and just note that I have grave concern that there is a kickback program taking place right now through the pleads program, the Substance Abuse Assessment Unit, and Treatment and Force Felonies Prop 36. Eighty percent of arrests have been drug-related arrests, not related to shoplifting. This is not helping small business. I'm concerned as over 100 employees are making around or more than $100,000 a year in other pay. Of those employees, the 142 million was for the city of San Diego. City attorney made 7.8 million in other pay. SDPD, 45 million in other pay. The county, I realize this is not a county forum, however, this goes to my point. The county had 60 million of those. The DA, 5.8 million. SD Public Defender, 4.9 million. And many, many of those $100,000 other pays went to detention facility nurses and psychiatrists. I have concerns that patients are being filtered through our system, brought in from all over the United States, put through treatment programs. Everyone involved in the process gets a kickback of $10,000 to $20,000 to $30,000, depending on who. I have concerns that Judge Paula Rosenstein, who was a VP of Mitchell International Insurance Processing and is now Drug Care Court, is taking kickbacks for defendants. I think defendants are being placed in homeless situations that they would never have been in before because they're being flown in from Oklahoma, like Kyle Witt, who's represented by Karen Gold in Los Angeles for being dumped on the street as a patient from Oklahoma who came for treatment. Watch the movie Body Brokers, please. And also, The Dirty Business of Getting Clean, a report by the New Jersey State Governor. Thank you.
Yes, thank you. I just wanted to follow up on what I stated earlier that the City's Short Term Vacation Rental Ordinance is enriching the CEO of Airbnb, who is now working with Elon Musk and Doge to decimate our federal employees, our federal agencies. And I encourage the City Council to take action to remove that profit-making monetization of our housing in San Diego. If you look up the current reports on Airbnbs in San Diego, over half of them, there are almost 9,400 total houses that are part of the city's database for short-term rentals. That means a full-time resident does not have access to that unless they pay an exorbitant amount of money. Of those over 9,000 houses, nearly half of them are the entire house. And many of those are in D2, where I live. A third of these houses are in District Two, nearly 3,000. So I am watching my neighborhood be infiltrated by monetizing homes that used to belong to neighbors, full-time neighbors, and now they are businesses, operating a commercial business in a residential neighborhood. I encourage the City, stop enriching people who are monetizing what should be one of the safest investments someone can make to have housing, whether they are renting or buying. And instead, by allowing this short-term vacation rental program to expand in San Diego to nearly 10,000 homes, there is no wonder our homelessness population is increasing. And there is no wonder the profits going to the CEO of Airbnb are now allowing him to go and work hand in hand with Elon Musk. Please get rid of that ordinance.
Thank you. Francine Maxwell, District Four. I want to make sure that the council understands for the CPP as shenanigans are being done behind closed doors. Nobody asked Charmaine Mosley to write a departure letter. Nobody asked for Danielle, our interim executive director, to write a letter. So this was strategic to try to upset the apple cart of CPP. I also want to know and thank the Environmental Services for giving us the dates of our trash fee meetings so that people can make adjustments in their schedule. You gave them to us early enough that the community can participate. Where's our budget schedule? When can the community see the departments come out to the community? Come out of the chamber so that we can see how D8, with all the harassment lawsuits and how the HR has protected D8 and the city, but we still have more lawsuits because all you do is have HR tell someone that, no, you're not being harassed and they go get an attorney. And then we, the taxpayers, have to pay not only that person's attorney fees, but a good amount of money because D8 has harassed a lot of her employees. D8 doesn't even have a BIPOC staff for her first term nor her second term. So we want to be careful when we throw around the words DEI equity and that we are a progressive body. You guys are not. Because there's some communities that have had a ton of town halls and there's some communities that have had none. And so if this is San Diego for all of us, then all of us would be having town hall meetings, educating each other equitably so that we can all come to an understanding of how the cuts are going to be felt harder in some areas of concern and how we continue to be the areas of concern. So again, thank you for the trash fee dates. Our community can now take off early to make sure that they can attend and know how much they're going to be charged and why. So let's get ready for the budget.
The final one. Where is your guys' pride flag? I'm just wondering, is it being washed? I don't know. Are you trying to hide it from the federal government? Who knows, right? I mean, never know what you guys are doing in there. But it's interesting when you guys want to enforce people to capitulate and surrender to the demands that you guys have that are completely unconstitutional and totally crimes against humanity. Like, you know, forcing people to take a genocide shot. That's one where it's like, if you don't do that, you're going to lose your job. But then when it's like the federal government comes in and they're like, we need you to work with us. To basically, I mean, because a big part of that is getting out violent criminals from the communities. But it's like, there's so much pushback against that. Like, people want it to happen, but they're like, we don't like that the federal government is coming in when everybody said that the federal government's the one that deals with immigration. And now that they're actually dealing with immigration, you're like, oh my gosh, we're going to fight this. So interesting. I mean, especially when you have the homeless people that are having their privacy be breached by coming in and having the police department go and do warrant checks. You know what I mean? It's like, we don't want to get you off the street. We just want to check and see if you got a warrant because we want to make some money off of you in the courts. But then when it comes to somebody who breached the border illegally and has committed a federal offense, you're like, oh my gosh, we got to protect them. We got to make sure that that's not happening. I mean, just like if they were homeless, you guys, right at Cesar Chavez Park, you're like, oh my gosh, this is such a sensitive matter. We need to put them in temporary housing immediately. Oh, but the rest of the people that have been living on the streets, a big fuck you, right? It's so interesting the way you guys do stuff and who your allegiance is to and that you are engaged in such treason. And again, like I said, I cannot wait for the federal government to come to San Diego because you guys will all be held accountable.